All right, great, thanks. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm Andrea Keen, Chair of the Wayzetta School Board. I call to order the Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for September 13th, 2021. We're excited to know that our students and staff have been back in school for four days, and we look forward to hearing all about how things are going as part of tonight's meeting. This meeting is open to the public and also livestreamed on YouTube. The recording of this meeting will also be available on the Wayzetta Public Schools website by clicking on District and then on School Board. Okay, let's get started. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Linda Cohen.
Here.
Sarah Johansson.
Here.
Bonita Lucky.
Here.
Chris McCullough.
Here.
Cheryl Poseen.
Here.
Chase Anderson.
Here.
Andrea Keen.
Here. Thank you. All right. First on our agenda this evening, we have approval of the agenda and consent agenda items. And consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. Consent agenda items are listed in full in your board book packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Bonita Lucky. Yes. Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Cheryl Poseen.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda, we have reports from organizations. And I'm wondering if Ramira Ambrose is here this evening. Oh, you are, great. Welcome. Come on up to the podium. I'm happy to welcome our Wayzetta High School Student Council Representative, Ramira Ambrose. It's our first time meeting you, and we're thrilled that you're here. Oh. Is anyone able to help her link up to the screen? Maybe, maybe?
You can feel free to speak from them too.
That might be the one thing that was easier on Zoom, right? Thank you, Nate. We'll see if we can figure it out.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Ramira Ambrose. I am the Senior Vice President for the high school this year. It's been a super exciting first week of school. We kicked off the school year with our senior sunrise. That took place before school on the first day. We had the seniors come to the grass fields near the high school, and we had donuts and conversation with the seniors to get them started for the school year. And then as for the first day of school, we had several of our Link Leaders wear their Link Crew shirts to help out the new freshmen to get to classes and kind of just make their way around the school in general. This year for Student Council, our goal and our theme is Restoring, Relinquishing, and Reimagining. With the past year and the pandemic, a lot of the students missed out on the events that we had in person and kind of that social connection that many of us love when we go to school. And so this year, we're hoping to make our events bigger and better than they have been before and bring back that personal connection that we missed in the past school year. As for our homecoming theme this year, we are going Glow Crazy Wayzetta, and we will be decorating the school with neon decorations, and our dance will also be themed in the glow theme as well. As for our homecoming important dates, first up, we have the dance that will take place September 25th. For the dance, we have a super fun DJ planned with an awesome light show, and we're hoping to get the school community involved and at the dance. To follow that, on September 28th, we have our Pep Fest. Our Pep Fest main goal is to get our students hyped and very excited for our football game that will come the following Friday. At the Pep Fest this year, we're hoping to introduce some new ideas that we haven't had before, as well as have our old ideas be implemented as well. And we're hoping to involve as many student groups as possible. So that includes the cheer squad, the band, the showstoppers, the football players, some of the staff, and some of the clubs as well. So we're really promoting inclusion this year. We want everyone to feel that they have a community represented within the Pep Fest. And then we'll have our block party take place October 1st before the game, starting at 4:30, I believe, outside the stadium. And at the block party, we'll have food trucks, games. Clubs will be set up there as well to show the students where they can join and stuff that they can do there as well. And then finally, that night, we'll follow up with the homecoming football game, and we're excited to see the football boys play and cheer them on. And then the student body, we're wearing blue and gold, I believe, and the senior ladies will be wearing their gold overalls. As for other homecoming activities we have planned, we have themed days planned for that week. Each day will have a spirit day, and on Tuesday of the Pep Fest, we're hoping each grade level wears clothing with their customized colors. So each grade is assigned a color, and we're hoping to have each grade represented with that color. As for the middle school and elementary school involvement, that's something that we want to try to implement this year. We want our homecoming event to be more than just the high school, but our Wayzetta community as a whole. And so we're working on getting our homecoming court potentially to read stories to the elementary students, kind of to just get them excited for high school and for them to be more involved. And then finally, we'll have some week-long activities during lunch to get students excited and ready for the homecoming week. And then to close, October 2nd, we're planning a Powderpuff Tackle Cancer Tournament. So this is something that's still in the works, and we're working on planning. But we're planning with NHS this year, so National Honor Society, to make one combined event. And in doing this, we're hoping, again, to promote that inclusion idea. So in previous years, we've only had the senior ladies participate, but this year, we're opening that up to all students and all grade levels. So anybody who would like to participate can participate. And we're hoping, again, to have that done on October 2nd. So that's all for the month of September and the beginning of October. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask.
Thanks so much, Ramira. It's fun to hear about everything happening at the high school. I'm wondering if my board colleagues have any questions or comments? Anyone?
I would just say thanks and welcome. That was a great report, very comprehensive, and that was only the first, the month, so thrilled to have the high school back in person, and it was a great report. So thanks, Ramira.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll just say a quick thank you. Thanks to the Link Leaders to pass that along. With an incoming freshman, it was super great, and it worked really well. Second, I don't know if my board colleagues remember, but I think that in the past, athletics has allowed the board to use their football toss for the festival or the carnival before the game. So if you need the board there with the football toss, we can do that again this year.
Good, I'll let them know.
Right, thanks.
Thanks. We'll see you next month. Thanks a lot. All right, great. Next on our agenda, we have recognition. So at this time, it's my pleasure to hand it off to Dr. Anderson.
Madam Chair, members of the board, our guests this evening. It's always my honor as superintendent to do the recognitions at our regular school board meeting. And tonight, we have several staff recognitions. And we typically start out with those who have announced their intent to retire since the last school board meeting, and we have two of those tonight. I don't believe either is here this evening, but I would like to congratulate Patty Bloom, speech teacher Plymouth Creek Elementary School for 20 years. And our second retiree is Sheri Oswald, paraprofessional to high school for 25 years. So I'm sure they're tuned into our YouTube, and we'll give them a warm round of applause. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank both of them for their many contributions, and their work will continue to have a positive impact within our school district. Next, I would like to invite forward our June Employee of the Month, Nicole Misaraco. Congratulations. And Nicole, I'd like to share the following that was submitted on your behalf for your nomination, and then you'll have an opportunity to say a few words if you'd like to. Bob Curiano said, "Champions don't show up to get everything they want. They show up to give everything they have." Nicole Misaraco showed us that she is a champion. Last year, when told that she would be teaching science online and having two different grade levels, she didn't know for sure about that particular assignment, but she definitely gave it everything she had. She found her focus and spent the year innovating, leading, and collaborating. She designed an innovative approach to a hands-on curriculum and made the concepts of science come alive in a digital environment. In prior years, she had spent countless hours learning and thinking about the state standards that helped her craft a live learning experience for her students. This mastery of creating a learning experience for students in person helped her transform this experience into an online learning opportunity for her students. She organized the other online members of the team and provided leadership that coordinated their work. Students and families had a cohesive experience from advisory and class to class. Students developed a sense of community. She collaborated with her colleagues that were teaching in person and hybrid to share her expertise and ensure alignment. She was also able to share power with her students. Her students had a voice in their learning. As a result, we saw students take ownership of their learning. Nicole Misaraco is dedicated to her work, her students, and her colleagues. She is certainly worthy of this recognition, and we as a school are proud to present her as our choice for Employee of the Month. Nicole, congratulations.
I'm really very honored to be recognized this evening, and I think it speaks a lot to be recognized by my East family. This is my 22nd year, if I'm doing the math correct, at East, and I really don't ever think about going anyplace else. We help foster a unique community at East, and there are several people I'd like to shout out to that really helped me become a better teacher in person. We talked about distance. I've worked great with the distance teachers, Emily Takakawa, J.C. Lawrence, and Adam Tillotson. Returning to in-person has been kind of a weird adjustment in having people in the classroom with me, students that I can't mute all, but they're there and live. And it really feels like I'm back home again, though, with Katie Jevery and Johannan and Rachel Markoulier. I've got super supportive administration and office staff, Paul Patel, Mike Rice, former principals Kurt Slater, Mike Trevick, Karen Kefler, and then John Groupner, who hired me over the phone and gave a girl that was sitting in Colorado a chance. So thank you very much to him. My family, my husband Mike, my girls Sophia and Emma, and the biggest thanks of all, my colleague, my partner, Matt Rowieder. Thank you. I can take a picture.
Congratulations again, Nicole. Next, I would like to invite Carolyn Narvison forward, please. Carolyn, congratulations. Must be the night for East Middle School tonight, right? Carolyn is being recognized tonight as a staff member from the Wayzetta Cafes at East Middle School as the July 2021 Employee of the Month. Wayzetta Cafes is proud to name Carolyn Narvison as Wayzetta Public Schools' July 2021 Employee of the Month. She is a fantastic employee and a huge asset to our department, East Middle School, and the entire Wayzetta Schools District. Carolyn is celebrating 20 years with Wayzetta Cafes and currently serves as the manager at East Middle School. The past year and a half was truly a year of challenges, unknowns, and improvising. Overnight, we went from serving meals from the comfort of our school kitchens to providing emergency food support curbside to families. We experienced many ups and downs from traffic and backed up for miles, making meal kits on the fly, so every family received their meals, to serving through all of Minnesota's seasons. Through all of this, Carolyn's attitude never wavered. Her ability to stay calm and troubleshoot the issue of the day provided a sense of comfort for all, including administrative leadership. Carolyn's passion for school nutrition shines every day. She genuinely cares about each and every student and strives to provide the best dining experience. We always know we can turn to Carolyn to try out our latest idea or recipe. During menu planning meetings, you will often hear her ask, "Can we serve a dessert this week?" Good idea. Carolyn's passion for students and school nutrition goes way beyond the breakfast and lunch service. One example of this is through the creation of the Chopped Challenge. During this challenge, students use mystery ingredients from our kitchen to create a creative dish. The winning dish is then featured on our menus. We can't thank Carolyn enough for all of her work throughout the years, and we are proud to formally recognize her as the July 2021 Employee of the Month. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition.
It is true. We suffered the last year and a half of working on the fly, and it was having the leadership that we have in the Wayzetta Cafe Department that led us, and the wonderful staff that we all work with. So I thank you for the kind words. I thank the board. And I thank the best school ever, East. Thank you.
Our next recognition this evening is for Dave Lutz, and I'd like to invite Dave forward, please. Dave, congratulations.
Should we take a quick break until that gets going?
Yes, let's see if we can get that up and going.
Sorry, Dave?
My apologies for this. We'll do our best to get it going again soon.
Yeah, Andrea must have gotten a text message from somebody.
Okay. I've been informed that our Plan B is to record, and we'll upload it later this evening. That seems to be the best course of action for now. So again, we apologize for this, but that's the direction that we're going. And at this time, it's my honor to move to the next Employee of the Month, Dave Lutz from our District Administration. And I'd like to share the following on Dave's behalf from his nomination. Since the pandemic began, so many of our colleagues have stepped up and accomplished incredible things in an effort to provide an outstanding educational experience for our students. As you can imagine, the leadership necessary to make all this happen has required an incredible amount of skill, talent, and commitment. The district is extremely proud to recognize Dave Lutz as the Wayzetta Public Schools' September Employee of the Month. Anyone that has had the pleasure of working with Dave quickly comes to appreciate the incredible way in which his mind works. With his depth of knowledge and understanding of education, his love of organizing information, and his ability to work collaboratively with others, he set the district up for success. Dave always seemed to be one step ahead in preparing the district for the challenges we would face. His calm and assured demeanor inspired confidence, kept us on track, and encouraged a high level of determination in meeting the needs of our students. We are extremely proud to work with him and are thankful for everything he has done to help students and families. In addition to the incredible leadership Dave provided at the district level, we also want to recognize his contributions as both a teacher and a principal. Dave served as a social studies and gifted and talented teacher at Central Middle School from 2007 to 2014. He also was an assistant football and lacrosse coach at Wayzetta High School. Dave left to become the Assistant Principal at Mankato East High School, and after one year in that role, was moved to Mankato West High School to assume the role of principal. Following his successful experiences in Mankato, we were fortunate that Dave returned to Wayzetta as principal of West Middle School from 2017 to 2020. He then assumed a curriculum role where he was the primary engineer for the academic programs designed and implemented during 2020-21 school year. He currently is a human resources supervisor for the district. Congratulations to Dave for this much deserved recognition.
Thank you, everyone, for this recognition. I'm humbled, and to be honest, my introverted self. It comes out with this type of attention. So I did write a few things down, so I'd read, so I wouldn't just ramble up here. I also know there are many, many staff in Wayzetta who are as much or more deserving than me to be recognized for their work. These last couple of years on the job have led to Herculean-like efforts by many, many people, all to maintain the high level of service, support, and excellence that we aim to provide the students and families we serve. It's a great place to call work, as you are literally surrounded by creative, talented, and motivated students, passionate, collaborative, and effective colleagues, and highly supportive and engaged and proud school community members. I'd like to take a few moments to communicate my appreciation, thank you to our superintendent and our school board for their continued efforts and supports of our district students, families, and staff. Thanks to the many colleagues over the years who have worked with me, many of which have watched me grow up from the fresh-out-a-college teacher that Jenny Berg hired back at CMS in 2007. Funny part about that story is I had just had surgery the day prior, and I wasn't allowed to drive yet, so my mom actually drove me to CMS for the job interview. I still nailed the interview, though. From Jenny Berg and Steve Root to Clark Doten to Jill Johnson and Chase Anderson and now Stacy Voss, I've benefited from a lot of great bosses and mentors through the years, and just want to say thanks to all for providing the opportunity and support to learn and grow. A big thanks to all the awesome students. I've had the privilege of teaching and serving as their principal, a few of whose names I see daily on my staffing sheets as they're now teachers in our district. It's truly a special place to work, and I'm excited to serve our district in another new role this year. Thanks again, and have a great evening.
And last, but certainly not least, our September Employee of the Month. And I would like to invite Aram Machadi to please come forward. Aram, congratulations. Plymouth Creek Elementary is proud to recommend Aram Machadi as the September Employee of the Month. Aram is an alum of Wayzetta Public Schools and has worked in the district in various roles, including student teaching in second grade, working in Wayzetta kids, and as an English-language teacher for the last 15 years. Aram has taught at Kimberly Lane, Greenwood, Gleason Lake, Wayzetta High School, and Plymouth Creek. Plymouth Creek has been fortunate enough to have her on staff for the last several years. She brings empathy, dedication, and extraordinary expertise to this position. Aram is a thoughtful and consistent teacher of our English-language students. She provides a high quality and individualized experience to each of her students. Families often utilize Aram as a means for navigating our school system as they acclimate themselves to a new environment. She puts students and families first and is an asset-based approach to teaching and learning, both from and with students. Aram's commitment to Plymouth Creek reaches beyond her classroom. She willingly takes on various projects and quietly gets them accomplished. She has organized international nights at Wayzetta High School, Kimberly Lane, and Plymouth Creek. She has also worked for community ed to provide homework help to students and is a member of the Legacy Group to provide resources to district parents. She has been a member of the district's affinity group for staff of color for the last several years, and most recently, has stepped up to serve the Plymouth Creek community as our equity team lead. Aram models genuine respect and a deep commitment to lifelong learning for all students, parents, and staff at Plymouth Creek. We benefit from Aram's quiet leadership, calm demeanor, and true dedication and commitment to education. Aram is beyond deserving of this recognition, and we congratulate her as the Wayzetta Employee of the Month for September. Congratulations, Aram.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Anderson, members of the school board, and fellow audience. I'm honored and humbled to receive this award. I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to my principal, Ashley Paul, and the entire Plymouth Creek Elementary School staff, students, families, and community. It is a true pleasure to work under Ashley's leadership. She makes sure our PC ships sail smoothly at all times, even through turbulent waters. Thank you to Jody Remzing, Anne Farenbach, and the district's EL linguistic dream team. Our EL population continues to grow, and our students come from all walks of life, speaking a multitude of languages. I'm proud to be an advocate for my EL students and families. It's a good thing I'm multilingual myself. A special shout-out goes to my wonderful family and friends for their everlasting love and support. As my father says, "A family that gels together stays together." We are one big Pakistani-American family. one big Pakistani-American family. I wouldn't be here without the grace of God. Thank you, God, for giving me life so I can make a positive difference in others academically, socially, and emotionally. Going down memory lane, Wayzata Public Schools and I have been connected for several decades. To add to my story, I am a community member and a resident of the district, am a proud parent of two Wayzata alumni, and most importantly, followed in the footsteps of my role model, my dear mother, Fazia Siddiqui, retired Wayzata High School EL teacher. I am privileged to work with each and every amazing student to reinforce Wayzata Public Schools' mission statement and strong commitment to a world-class education so that our students are prepared to thrive today and excel tomorrow in an ever-changing global society. Wayzata's core values also hold dear to my heart: achievement, collaboration, community, equity, integrity, and respect. I look forward to continuing my story at Wayzata Public Schools for another several years to build ongoing relationships with my students, families, and colleagues. I would like to end by sharing a quote by Maya Angelou that resonates with me. "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." Thank you. Gracias, shukriya, mexi, dhanne badh, arigato, spasiba, xianxian, danka, shukran, kamsanida, obrigado.
And that concludes our recognition portion of the meeting tonight. Thank you.
All right. It is such a joy to celebrate our amazing teachers and staff. One more round of applause for our four Employees of the Month. All right. Next on our agenda, we have Audience Opportunity to Address the School Board. And this section of the agenda provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school board. Sign-up sheets are available at the back table. If you'd like to speak to the board, please fill one out with your name, address, and the topic you'd like to address. This evening, each speaker will be invited up to the podium to speak for three minutes with a total of one hour allotted for public comment. Our Administrative Specialist Tyler Reinhardt's giveaway. He will help us keep track of the time by holding up a red card at the three-minute mark. Please end your comments when you see the red card. Finally, please note that this time is allotted for the presentation of Audience Comments only, and no board discussion or debate will follow the comments. We thank you for your willingness to share your feedback with the board. Do we have anyone who would like to share any public comments with the board tonight? Yeah, okay. I can take them right up here if you have them filled out. Thank you. Thanks a lot. You can head right over to the podium if you'd like. Pardon me? Oh, okay. All right. I'd like to welcome Justin Hibbits.
All right. Is this thing on? Yes, it is. All right. Good evening. I am here to talk about equity and racism, particularly the equity commitment. You, the school board, the school community, are all in, and you make that quite clear all over the Wayzata School website. I see equity. I see racism links. I'm here to tell you that I, and my family, opt out of equity. I feel it is racist, and I feel that there's no, no need for it in our community. I was raised to see someone for their actions, for the words they speak, not for the color of their skin. Only their character matters. What do you call being forced to see someone's skin color before you see their actions? What do you call being forced to see someone's skin color before you hear the words from their mouths? I call that racism. That's the very definition of racism. And it has no place. Let's go further than this. Let's take a direct quote from the equity commitment. Study and practice anti-racist behavior so we can continuously learn and improve. But what is anti-racism? Well, let's ask the author of How to Be an Anti-Racist, Ibram X. Kendi. In this book, he states explicitly, "An anti-racist is one who is supporting an anti-racist policy through their actions or expressing an anti-racist idea." It's pretty self-referential. So let's go even deeper. He says, "The only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination, and the only remedy to present discrimination is future discrimination." His solution is to perpetuate discrimination, perpetuate racism, not abolish it. So anti-racism, by Kendi's definition, is racism by the dictionary definition. What is the real remedy to racism? The real remedy is equality, true equality, treating everybody according to their character. You can change your character. You cannot change your skin color. You cannot change your sex. You cannot change your orientation. You can only change your character. So how can you rightfully discriminate based on characteristics that are immutable? I know I cannot. Why? Because I'm not a racist. I'm not a sexist. No matter how you want to report the definition.
Time's up. Thank you for your comments.
So I opt out of equity.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll hear from Valentina Ayers. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Valentina Ayers. We went into two weeks isolation with an idea not to overwhelm the hospitals back in March 2020. Then we started wearing masks with an idea that we are not going to kill our grandmas. Now we have a vaccine available for grandmas and our adults, but we're still using the same argument in forcing kids to wear masks. I keep, I keep hearing people referring to science, but I don't understand how the deaths of three children in Minnesota during 18 months put us into such fear. Yes, every kid's lost life is a tragedy. More children died of flu in U.S. during the last eight months pre-COVID flu season than died of COVID in 18 months, but we didn't mask up for that. For all your rules, effective masking is not happening. In my own neighborhood, there were kids whom I saw not going to school last year, but running from house to house unmasked. My own children tell me that many students in school wear their masks off their noses, making this mask-wearing useless. And many of the masks themselves made from thin cloth, and they are ineffective. We learned about it. This is science. At this time, I hope we all realize that this virus is here to stay. We have the Delta variant, which is more contagious but less fatal. We learned about that, too. It is science. There will be additional variants, we're very sure. Are we going to stay masked for all that time? How long is going to be? We have vaccination available. For kids under 12, the possibility of dying from COVID much more slim than any other age group again. In Minnesota, only three children have died of COVID. How does that compare to the increased suicidal rate among teenagers? Why we're not talking about that? There are kids and people with some underlying health issues. They not only want, but need to wear masks, and hopefully not cloth ones, because we know it's very ineffective. We respect their rights and their choices. It is their choice. We respect it. But please make, allow us to make our choices, too. We parents, after 18 months of learning to live with COVID, are willing to take the risk, but would like to enjoy our lives, which everybody did this summer, I'm very sure. What makes the Wayzata School System better able to make that decision about our families than we ourselves, the parents of these kids? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we'll hear from Debbie Larson. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Thank you very much. Actually, I wanted to tag on to what the previous speaker shared. She referenced three deaths in the state of Minnesota, three children's deaths. I mentioned in the last meeting where I got up and spoke that I consider myself an expert on COVID deaths. I'd like to give you a little context on those three deaths. So the first one was a nine-month-old child that died at home and tested positive for COVID. So the fact, I guess, is they tested positive. That's not to say they actually died of COVID. The second, there are two deaths in the five-to-nine category. One was a seven-year-old that actually died of mitochondrial deficiency type one. And if you Google that and look it up, it says that kids with that disorder aren't expected to live past adolescence. The underlying cause of death on that child's death certificate was actually that disorder. It wasn't COVID. The third one, I can't find anywhere, and I'm filing a request for the state to actually update their website because I've looked through every death many, many times in that category and cannot find the word COVID on any of them. So just thought I'd add a little color to that. And I'd ask, I'd like to ask a favor, and I will submit this in writing because I'd actually like a response to this question. Would you please consider doing a little field research and connecting with the school in the state of Minnesota that has no mask mandate, and get feedback from those people on what their experience is like? Are they having problems? What are the outcomes? Can you take that opportunity to actually learn from that? Because maybe, you know, maybe there's something that we can do differently. So that's all I have to share. I would appreciate it if you'd get back to me. If it's appropriate, I can send it to you in writing, but thank you for the consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we'll hear from Jeff Sams. Welcome.
Thank you. So thank you. This is the first time I've ever done this. I have a couple of kids in the district, but I've watched the past meetings on YouTube, and it's always struck me that both sides say follow the science. You know, one side says, "Let's follow the CDC. Let's follow the American Association or Academy of Pediatrics." The other side says, "The virus particle is smaller than the holes in the masks, and here's 19 studies that show you that masks aren't effective," or at least the kind of cheapo masks that we all wear. So to me, then, you have to start to go back to common sense or try to logic it out yourself, because I think both those arguments are good arguments if you just start with them. They're both good. But for me, from the beginning of this pandemic, we've had so many things that they've told us that have proven not to be true. The hand sanitizer that we all came in with at the door, hardly anybody stops for that anymore. It doesn't stop the virus. This virus, it's airborne. It stops the flu. What about all the clear plastic that you guys have between you? We know now that that doesn't work. It's like cigarette smoke. If someone was smoking next to you, you'd smell the smoke. It's in the air. It goes around. What about last year when we didn't necessarily think we could even get kids in school around the country? That was proven wrong. We could do it. Six feet. I talked to a teacher friend of mine in Buffalo, New York, and he said, "You guys are going back in February? How can you do it? It can't be six feet." I said, "Well, they changed it to three feet." Okay. You know, and it just goes on and on like that. We all had our numbers last, last year on Thursday, the Hennepin County numbers. What's it gonna be? What are we gonna do? Now that's all out the window. So I'd ask you all to respectfully consider that masks, the cheap masks we all wear, may not do much good anyway. All right. So how do we go forward? Well, this is my humble request, is that Superintendent Anderson, you have put together numbers on COVID since the beginning and presented them to our community. I would humbly request that you and your team did that by, by what Debbie said, is follow up with your colleagues at other schools. Minnetonka High School is masks optional. Chanhasan High School is masks optional. Providence Academy, a mile from our high school, has 900 kids with masks optional, pre-K to seniors. Holy Name is less than a mile from Greenwood, something like that, in our district. Hundreds of students, pre-K through sixth grade, no masks. It's an old building. They probably don't have great ventilation. Are they experiencing problems? I think that would be great if you could give us that data in the next meetings, because I'll change my opinion. If it's statistically significant that masks work in our community, I'll say we should mask up. But if they don't statistically work, then please lead our community to bring the other side over and say, "This is something we learned, too. They don't work. Let's uncover the faces of our kids." Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Looks like we have a couple more. You can come on up. All right. Is it Jasmine Leach?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome.
I'm surprised I could read my writing. Okay. Hello. I have nothing prepared. I didn't even know about this meeting until a few hours ago. We have five kids, and four of which are the public school age. And just two weeks ago, we pulled our two elementary school kids to attend a private Christian two days a week and to homeschool. We are just not liking what we're seeing. In preschool, my, at the time, three-year-old came home and told me about his, his new friend. And I knew who he was, but I just kept saying, "Well, who is he? Who is he?" He was the only colored person in his class, but he said, "Well, Mom, he's the one with the glasses." I loved that. He had no, they don't see the vision, so what we're talking about, this all jamming this equity stuff down our kids' throat, is so harming. They are causing to see things that may not exist, and you're putting things into their head. So then, fast forward to kindergarten. He came home and he ran off the bus, and he said, "Mom, why do all white people think they're better than black people?" That's the messages that our kids are getting at school. It's sad. That's not what we teach our kids. That's not what they came home with. So it's, it's putting things, once again, into their heads that these little minds don't even see. And it's making us upset, and it's making us sad. That same kindergartner last year, after being in a mask all day, was looking forward to being outside for recess. He told me he came home crying because he had to be put on a bench because he was playing on the wrong zone equipment for that day. That is wrong. Our kids need exercise. If you're gonna put them in a mask all day, they need to be able to move. They need to be able to see their friends. They need to be able to see their friends without a mask. He was just learning to read. That was his first year in school. He did not see his friends' faces. He did not see his teachers' faces that whole school year. That broke our hearts. So that's why they're, they're home this year. And, I mean, like I said, I have nothing prepared. It's just, these are the things that I'm seeing and my husband are seeing, and we are... are, we're not appreciating it, and it's, and it's sad, and it's, like I said, these little kids. And he, he was crying because he had to sit on a bench during recess because he was playing on the wrong zone. Apparently, they zone the, the things off, so your class is here and your class is here. So if you touch the wrong equipment, you're going to get COVID. Not true. Right? Because all of our kids have been playing together all summer. Our kids have been in sports all summer, playing the same equipment, using the same bats. All of a sudden, a weekend before school starts, we get a mandate for, they have to wear masks. So, once again, if, if everyone thinks, like she said, the neighborhood kids, if you don't think that the kids are running around and playing together, you're wrong.
Thanks for your comments. All right. Next, we'll hear from Shannon Koenig, please. Welcome.
Thank you. I, too, would like my questions answered from the email from August 19th. I emailed the board just asking about seven different questions. So I would like that back in writing. I wrote to you through an email. Will Wayzata respect the exclusive right of each student, parent to inform consent and to decline both the experimental injection and the mask? Will you respect our parent choice? And should you not? Do you know that there are legal ramifications for such overreach? Will Wayzata schools respect the 21 U.S. Code 360 BBB dash three? The law? Will you respect the law? And are you ready to face the parents who are ready to fight this for our children? And then there was a school mentioned, several schools in our area, all local to Wayzata. I'm just going to read a letter that they sent out to their families before school started. This local school will not require face coverings. Face coverings will be optional for all local school community members as we begin the new school year. As there is no mask mandate, face coverings have, of course, been optional. Sorry, my screen just went down. Since May, in countless venues throughout the state, children are benefiting tremendously from opportunities to be together. This is so important because so many children and young people in our nation, especially among those unable even to attend school, suffered last year from anxiety, depression, social anxiety, lack of socialization, and lack of learning, among other pathologies. There were adverse physical, social, mental, psychological, and spiritual effects from some of the more dramatic efforts to battle COVID. We acknowledge that there were many mysteries about the disease, and we all had to make decisions about how to navigate amid the mysteries. There are fewer mysteries now. We do know the, that respiratory viruses give rise to variances and will likely be living with those for quite a while, but COVID cases, including the Delta variant, will, like, hospitalizations and deaths have plummeted in relation to earlier highs in Minnesota, a state which also leads the nation in overall vaccination rates. Minnesota hospitalizations of school-age children have been and remain very low. School-age mortality from COVID is virtually nonexistent. Local schools' own experience with COVID last year was that symptoms and severity among children who contracted the illness were similar to those from other seasonal respiratory illnesses. There were no hospitalizations among the 42 local school community
Time's up.
Members out of more than 900 total
Sorry, enough. Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Thank you for the public comment. We'll move along on our agenda. Next, we have administrative reports and recommendations. So at this time, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Anderson for the back-to-school update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's my pleasure tonight to give you an overview, along with some of my colleagues, in regard to the start of the school year. So we have a number of slides that we're going to be sharing with you, and at this time, I'd like to ask my colleagues to join me here near the podium. So when we make the transition to have them speak about their departmental areas and the topics that they're going to be speaking about, they'll be close by. So thank you for joining me tonight. I appreciate it. And we are really excited to have the school year started. And we've had four days. We started on Wednesday of last week. We had three great days last week and another one today, and we're looking forward to that continuing. And I wanted for some of my team members to be here tonight in order to share from their departmental areas, some of the updates, some of the things that they're working on this year, and just to share with you as reminders, in many cases, but also to members of our community, the dynamic and comprehensive nature of our school district and all of the different things that we focus on during the course of a school year. So I would just start off by reminding the board and our visitors that our focus was about keeping our students safe and in school. That's really our overriding goal, as we shared at our recent school board meetings when we presented mitigation strategies and spoke about various components of the beginning of the school year. And we're really happy to be back in person and to have our students in school every day, riding school buses, being out on the playground and enjoying recess time and in class with their friends. And it feels really good to have everybody back and started up here with a great school year thus far after the first four days. I would just like to offer a few thanks to our team members. We have many different departmental areas. They all really worked hard, not only this summer, but into the opening days of school, when our staff returned a few days prior to the students, getting them ready, making sure the classrooms were ready. We had a number of construction projects that were happening and upgrades being done in many of our buildings. So I appreciate the work that the principals did and all of the planning and organization that went into getting the school year ready to go. I would also like to thank our human resources team for hiring. We hired a number of folks again this year, and you're going to get an update on that from Stacy here in a little bit, and an overview of our staff team across the district. I mentioned the construction work that's been going on. We've been doing that almost forever, I think, for at least the last decade plus in many of our buildings, including the building of two new elementary schools, a large addition to the high school, and upgrades and improvements at all of our school buildings and facilities. We've rebranded our Culinary Express program and are now referring to that as the Wayzata Cafes, and we're going to hear a little bit about that from DeeDee here momentarily. Our transportation team is doing really well. We're very fortunate that, I think, we have three spare bus drivers. That's well beyond what many districts are currently experiencing. A lot of districts are short on drivers and are having to cancel routes, and I'm just really proud of the work that DeeDee and John Deutsch, working in tandem with Richenga and our transportation team to get those routes fulfilled. And I think they've been relatively on time at all levels for all three waves, and we'll get a little more information about that when DeeDee shares about transportation. Our teaching and learning team has worked hard to ensure that we're ready to start the school year and to make sure all the supplies and materials are here. In education, much like any field, I think the supply chain challenges are there, where supplies, equipment, and any type of curriculum material can be perhaps a bit challenged in regard to arriving on time, but I really appreciate the work that our teaching and learning team has done. All of our teachers and support staff working through the challenges, not only of managing COVID, but also with the construction that may be happening in some of their buildings, and just getting ready for students' return to school has been a big lift for them. For some of our staff, summer really never comes, although it does, they continue working through it. Community ed and special education are two good examples of that. A number of our staff members were here delivering summer programming with our youth enrichment programs and many other opportunities for community members and our students. Our technology team maybe is second to none in regard to the heavy lift of implementing the distance learning and hybrid models and ensuring that all the technology was distributed and in working order. And they've done a wonderful job of ensuring that there's the support for not only our students, but also our staff and all of the equipment and software systems that they need. Our communications department has done a wonderful job of helping us to keep our community informed with communications that are sent out via email, that are on our website, on our Facebook, and there's just a lot of opportunities for our community to know what's happening within the district. And of course, our district administrative staff, who have not only ordered and received supplies, but continue to support principals and all of our building and program supervisors to ensure that we could get off to a good start. So I just wanted to do a shout-out with those groups and thank them for their dedicated efforts and all that they do to help us every day, but also for sure this year to get the school year started. So a few things on the radar for the coming year, obviously navigating the pandemic, and we continue to work hard to monitor and assess what we're doing and how we can best move forward and ensure that we can achieve those goals of keeping our staff and students healthy as well as keeping them in school. I don't think anybody really loved the distance learning last year or the hybrid learning, and the preferred model for a great majority of our families is to have students in school and enjoying that interaction and engagement. So we want to do everything we can to help ensure that we continue to do that. Of course, we'll continue working on the implementation of our strategic roadmap and our recently approved equity commitment, planning for the projected enrollment growth in the district. Although we've plateaued a little bit here in the last couple of years, we anticipate that that growth will kick in again, and we'll need to continue to make good long-term plans for ensuring that we have adequate space for students in grades pre-K through grade 12. We'll continue with our curriculum and instruction work along with the professional development. Of course, you're all aware, there's a school board election on November 2nd, and we'll continue to do our very best to deliver on our strategic roadmap, our mission and vision, our core values, and our strategic directions to bring excellence to each and every one of our 12,000 students. I just wanted to give a quick overview of our leadership team. These four individuals are assembled with me here tonight. Nate Flansburgh is our Associate Superintendent, and we're happy to welcome him to the district this year. DeeDee Caring is our new Executive Director of Finance and Operations. Dana Miller, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and our Executive Director of Human Resources, Stacy Voss. Each of them will share a little bit from their departmental areas this evening. So they're four members of our strategy leadership team, and these are the other four district administrator staff members of our strategy leadership team. Wade Phillips in Technology, Amy in Communications, Jamie Parnell, Jody Remsing in Special Services, and Jenny Ebert in Community Education. And I'd also like to mention that Corey Knutson, our WEA president, is also a member of our strategy leadership team and attends our meetings regularly, and we always appreciate his insight. Enrollment for the current year, you can see that we're, if you look at the bottom right, we're up about 31 students from where we finished off last year. Again, that's a result of very large kindergarten class. I think we have 940 kindergarten students, if I remember correctly, and we anticipate that we'll continue to have good, robust growth into the future. We anticipated there would be more kindergarten students this year because we felt that there were probably some families that chose to hold back a year until hopefully COVID would be in a better position, and I think that that probably is at least in part a reason that we have a relatively large group of kindergarten students this year. As a reminder, we have a number of school facilities. So when we opened last week, we have, as you know, an early learning school, which opened last year, the new addition onto Oakwood Elementary School. We have nine elementary schools, three middle schools, one high school, and also we have our transition school, which is at the former clubhouse at the Elm Creek Golf Course, and that serving our transition students, our 18- to 21-year-olds beautifully, as they make that transition from high school to the work world and, and the future employment that they will be moving to. So those comprise our facilities. We also have a couple of district facilities where our central services are at, as well as our district offices. So that's an overview of all of the buildings that our principals, teachers, support staff worked hard to get up and operational here in the past several weeks. This is a copy of our strategic roadmap, and I wanted to give a little bit of history with this. This was first developed in 2011. Some of you were on the board at that time, and we've revised it two times, in 2015 and 2019, and that would mean that it's probably due for review again in 2022, maybe 2023. We've typically done it every three or four years, so we'll be making some decisions about moving forward with updating our strategic roadmap. It's comprised of our mission, and as you know, our tagline has essentially become excellence for each and every student. The full mission statement is there on the slide. This has been in place without change, I think, since the original roadmap in 2011. Although it was reviewed, it was felt by parties involved that it has been serving us well and really is a great mission statement for our organization, where we strive to bring excellence to each and every student. Our vision statement is, in some ways, our business model, if you will. It's actually built off of a, some business model research from the mid-'90s, and the three focus areas that we have include our exceptional student learning experiences and relationships, and in many ways, that could be considered to be our products and our services that we deliver to our students. We also focus on operational excellence, which is that sweet spot of efficiency and effectiveness, and we continue to strive toward community trust, confidence, and partnership. So those are the three main parts of our vision statement. Our core values include these three and the three on the next slide, achievement, collaboration, and community. And our other three core values are equity, integrity, and respect. And those, again, have been in place for many years during the implementation of our roadmap. We also approved, you as a school board approved in April of this year, our equity commitment. And really, this is designed to help strengthen the mission and vision and to help bring forth that mission statement, that tagline, or that aspirational goal that we hold for all of our students in the form of excellence for each and every student. It serves in many ways as an amplification of our core values. It was driven from our core values and further defined from those six core values that I just shared with you, and helping us to realize our four strategic directions, which are the following. Achievement, which is really that focus on third-grade achievement in the areas of reading, writing, mathematics. Each and every student achievement in regard to demographic classification and ensuring that there is no achievement gap or opportunity gap, and continuing to strive toward ensuring that each and every one of our students can find that success outlined in our mission statement. Personalization, helping students understand their unique talents and giving them a voice in their educational experiences. And as challenging as COVID has been and distance learning and hybrid learning, I think we probably really learned a lot about personalization in the past year, about how we can deliver instruction in different ways, be responsive to student needs in different ways, and do our very best despite some extreme challenges to deliver a high-quality program for our students. And finally, we want our students to excel academically, but we also want them to have a good health and well-being, both physically and mentally, and we support that with our Student Support Services Team, our wonderful teachers, our supportive principals, who ensure that our students have the resources that they need to, to find success and to maintain this good health and well-being. I would like to, at this time, introduce DeeDee Caring, our Executive Director of Finance and Operations, and she'll cover the next few slides. DeeDee, if you would.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Just wanted to tell you a little bit about finance and operations. As you know, finance and operations includes buildings and grounds. It includes our transportation department, construction, Wayzata Cafe, the Welcome Center, and of course, finance and business services, which includes payroll, budgeting, purchasing, and accounts payable. Since many of my reports generally are around finance, I won't be speaking about that tonight, but just know that we have a dedicated staff that manages over $223 million budget on an annual basis, and that department is led by Mert Woodard and Jill Schwinn. But regarding our Welcome Center, which is located out on Highway 55, you can see the responsibilities on the left-hand side of the slide. So our enrollment is one of the key pieces of our revenue that we generate for So our enrollment is one of the key pieces of our revenue that we generate for a school district. And so the Welcome Center, led by Kristin Tollerson, her and her staff facilitate enrollment for all of our programs. They're responsible for tracking all school-aged residents regardless of their enrollment in Wayzetta Public Schools. And they annually facilitate a comprehensive census to seek for all preschool students for faculty, facility, and programming enhancements. Those are just a few of the items that I highlighted from the numbers on the left. On the enrollment, as of 7/21, we had a total of 11,990. This is an increase over the projected figures, but yet, if you will recall, and as Dr. Anderson talked about earlier, a little less than what we had anticipated a year ago. So we're trying to get that pause back up and the students coming in for the next year. And as we mentioned earlier, today we had a highlight of a staff member from the Wayzetta Cafes. So we did do a rebranding, as you know, on the Wayzetta Cafes, was previously called Culinary. And the Wayzetta Cafes, along with Michelle Sagdal and her staff, rebranded the process from that Culinary Express to the Wayzetta Cafes. And they started in 2019, working through the pandemic, and was just completed this fall. So the three symbols that you see on the right-hand side, the fork, the hands, and the laurel, all connect with those items listed below. Eat, connect, and belong. The meal participation that we are seeing on the left-hand side increases, we're seeing over the 2019-20, which is the last time we were really in place, have gone up. And the majority of the reason for that is the USDA has provided the seamless summer options, which allows free meals for all of our students. So breakfast and lunch, and we are seeing increased participation. You'll note at the bottom that on the staffing, that 88% of the staff are hired. We're still looking for people. So get the word out, we're still wanting more staff, to be fully staffed. We do have some individuals who are subbing in and helping out in some of those areas where it's super busy. And then Buildings and Grounds Department, as you can see, managing the Wayzetta Public Schools and sites keeps our Buildings and Grounds Department very busy. On the left-hand side in the top, the construction of the 2017 bonds that the voters approved provided funds, and we're finalizing some of the projects that we had. And that included the media centers at Plymouth Creek, Gleason Lake, and Birchview Elementary Schools. Underneath that, you can see the LTFM projects. And LTFM stands for Long-Term Facility Maintenance, and that is a funding source that is generated for each school. And so some of the projects that you can see there at Gleason Lake, half of the classrooms were renovated. At Birchview, pods K through five were renovated. And then some other opportunities at Greenwood, did some roofing. The high school, we did some parking lot. And then window renovations at Kimberly Lane. On the right-hand side, you can see the Buildings and Grounds Statistics. We're just under 2 million square feet, over 400 acres, and approximately 90 custodians maintain all of our buildings and sites. And so John Deutsch is the manager for that and does a great job leading that team. And likewise, John also manages the transportation oversight. And so as you can see there, we have 495 routes, 85 buses, and special education buses, about 172 routes, and just under 9,700 square miles per day, which is huge. And fortunately, as Dr. Anderson said, we are 100% staffed in this area, and we're excited to have that up. So thank you.
Next, I would like to invite our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Dana Miller, to the podium. Thanks, Dana.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson and Board. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm going to still be learning the process here, so I'll juggle the computer while I go about here. But first of all, I would just like to take an opportunity, as Nate and I both said, we've been here about five minutes. And when I started looking at the work up there that we've already been engaged in in the last 10 weeks, I just needed to make sure I took the opportunity for a shout out to the teaching and learning team, who have been incredible in onboarding me, specifically Dr. Jill Johnson, who I replaced, Lori Peterson in the Teaching and Learning Department, and then ironically tonight, Dave Lutz, who continues to be my go-to and is managing my ever-ending questions. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank him as well. I apologize, I'm a little hoarse, had a wonderful family wedding this weekend, and I think I cheered on my baby brother much, a little too much tonight. Around curriculum instruction and assessment, then, we've been, as you know, in the district, we're on about a 10-year cycle when we review curriculum and materials and so forth, unless something comes up from a state level that, or a need before that. COVID has thrown that cycle into a little bit of a topsy-turvy. And so my team and I, our resource teachers who help manage that, are actually meeting tomorrow and taking a look at where we're at in that 10-year plan and are going to be moving some blocks around to accommodate just what we've had to put on pause as a result of COVID. And some of that coming from teacher ask as well, is just to what they were able to implement. So at the elementary level right now, we had started with the CCC adoption two years ago, and last year would have been their first full implementation year. And the ask was that, given that we weren't really able to do that distantly, that we'd try that again. And so we are bringing in more trainers from CCC and reviewing that, and really treating this as the first year at an elementary level where we'll be fully implementing that curriculum. At the secondary level, we're starting year two with our language arts review. And then at the science, the state actually had put a pause. As you know, they're doing some shifting of standards and grade levels at the state level specifically in the secondary, but some stuff has moved around the elementary as well. But Wayzetta was in a good position prior to COVID with that, so continued that work. So this year, at the elementary level, we've implemented mystery science and replaced our FAS models with that. And that is a full go, and those folks were in all summer working on that and will continue to be engaging in that first full year. And so I also want to thank Marie Beck at the Science Center. She was on overload this summer as she brought in, brought the old in to deposit and brought new in to juggle out. And if you've never had a chance to be over at the Science Center, I recommend, it's just, it's an incredible space of work. And then social studies will be our heavy lift this year. The state is continuing to seek input on the state standards of social studies, and there's been some struggles around that at a state level. So we're kind of waiting to see where that goes and continuing to do our research with where we're at in our curricular needs in social studies as well. And then world language, we're going to put a pause on this year. Megan Boothke, our TOSA and resource teacher in that position. Unfortunately for Wayzetta, but has had the opportunity to change leadership positions and move to a district, another level at a district level. So we're going to wait on that one for next year until we can replace Megan in that position. And then we also just decided to put a hold on facts as well at a district level. As far as assessment goes, Dr. Stacy Lackner has been before you in August, and she'll be returning again in October to speak to fall data and some of that MCA information. That's a little bit different this year, again, given the testing during COVID. Another one of the areas this year that we're continuing to work on is the collaboration with our Equity Director, Solvee Harity, to make sure that our work in teaching and learning is fully embedded with our goal to reach each and every learner. So we want to make sure that all of our students have full, rigorous access to student-centered learning opportunities and how that embeds into our curriculum and assessments. We'll be working on that. Primary focus there this year will be really digging back into our MTS systems, which is multiple-tiered systems of support, and SEL, which is Student Emotional Learning. We want to really focus this year on Tier One intervention, which are those interventions that happen in the classroom and our school-wide systems. And so Sam Fredrickson, our Principal in Special Assignment, along with Amy Van Dunk in Specialized Services, and myself have been coming together and just starting to really dig into that work. I had the opportunity to work with our Student Support Specialist, and we're excited to also have them involved in that work and look at, across our nine elementaries, what does that Tier One support look like, as well as our student support systems? And so that we can be aligned in that and make sure that we're recording and reporting all of our information and how we're supporting students is the same regardless of the elementary that you're in, and that we can get good data then based on that. So that'll be our focus around that. Additionally, along with Associate Superintendent Nathan Vansburgh, we've been working on kind of redefining and rebranding our PLCs, our Professional Learning Committees in the district or communities. And we're going to start with what we know from research, and that is the quality of the classroom teacher and the quality of the principal has the greatest impact on student learning. So while I love all the curriculum and standards and so forth, it really still comes down to the teacher we have in front of our students and the principal that we have leading that work. And so for our PLCs, we'll be focusing on professional learning of our principal group this year and learning about what makes a high-quality professional learning committee our community, and how do we lead that in a building. In addition to that, then, we want to make sure everybody in a leadership or coaching position has that same framework and grounding. And so we're going to be doing that same training or professional learning with our coordinators through Specialized Services, our Student Support Specialist, our peer coaches, our research teachers, and all of our teaching and learning team. So basically, really focusing on everybody that has opportunity to be engaged in training of our teachers and supporting and coaching in that model. So excited to be kicking that work off. And then I mentioned kind of a change to that peer coach model, but Brad Anderson heads up that group and has been working hard. COVID afforded us an opportunity there with a cut in our peer coaches to then look at that model and say, is there a way that we could be doing this that would provide additional or even stronger support to our teachers? And we found that that might be just restructuring some of the reporting we do so that the value of that work that we hear from teachers is in the conversation and in the coaching. And so being able to put more time into the conversation and coaching model and making sure that those goals and models are aligned with building goals and models as well. So that'll be our focus there. Additionally, we're going to be kicking off a middle school review. As we look at the growth and where it's happening at the district, we want to make sure that the quality of programming that we provide at all, it doesn't depend on the building that you're in. And so we want to make sure we have strong alignment. So one of our goals this year will be kicking off that middle school review and looking at that. And then lastly, of course, we too are still doing COVID-19, right? And so that has taken up a big chunk of our time already. And I just want to give a huge shout out to Sam Fredrickson, again, our TOSA, who is really helping lead that quarantine practices, K-12. So we've put a system in place so that we can continue to provide educational support to our students who may need to quarantine during this time. And so I want to make sure I thank him. So just a few things going on in the first 10 weeks of teaching and learning, and it's all super exciting, so thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Next, I'm going to invite up our Associate Superintendent Nate Flansburgh. Before I do that, I just wanted to comment a little bit that he's going to be speaking about the Center for Educational Leadership, the University of Washington program that I've spoken to you about. He's going to hit a few high-level component parts of this. And you might recall, a couple of years ago, I took the Principal Supervisor Academy from the Center for Educational Leadership and was really impressed about the focus on ensuring and developing high-quality instruction within classrooms to meet the needs of all students. And I found the model to be very intriguing. And lo and behold, as we continue to move forward and we're able to hire an Associate Superintendent, we found somebody who's actually been doing this. And in fact, the person working in the Mounds View District where Nate joined us from is one of the instructors that I had while I took that course a couple of years ago. So I think it's really going to help us in alignment across the district, not only from grade level to grade level, but just from teacher to teacher. And it's really a focus on developing principals and helping them identify and understand clearly what to look for in classrooms consistently across the district so that we can ensure that all of our students can be successful. So I'll turn it over to our in-district expert on this program, who's had some experiences with it, Nate Flansburgh. Nate, if you would.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, Madam Chair, members of the board, community members. Good evening. I'm excited to be able to share a little bit about the University of Washington Center for Educational Leadership Program. And it really has a focus that leads with instruction. And it's, the expectation is high rigor for all students and really bringing about alignment within our system. Research shows us that a teacher that's in the 75th percentile or higher, their students are usually outperforming their peers by upwards of four months over the course of a year. Now, we have updated research over six different studies that also show us that the role of a principal through that process has probably been understated. A principal in the 75th percentile or higher also has significant impact on the student achievement within their building by three months over the course of the year in comparison to their national peers. Now, you'd go, oh, four months, three months. The difference being, the principal is impacting the entire school and the entire system versus a singular classroom. But it all does begin with everything that's happening in the classroom with students. We really need to ensure that school improvement begins with people improvement. So professional development and the expectations that we have, that we're working towards, is really highly focused on what's happening with the principals, who are then in turn helping lead high-quality instructional practices within the classroom. It begins with principal walkthroughs. It provides, really sets up the feedback expectation for students and for teachers. We're really looking for high, engaging classrooms. We are looking for students who, when they are engaged, we can see and have the ability to identify and define it, and really being able to coach teachers differently than we have before. So there's taking that feedback, really starting to go into a laser-like focus on what that specific feedback looks like, and then aligning it across the system. So we want to be able to just not have pockets of success. We want to see success in every single room with every single student at high levels. This year, the entire executive team and myself will be going through the Principal Supervisory Academy, but we also have a few others who will be joining our team, Solvee Haraday, and as well as Jenny Ebert. Jenny Ebert oversees early school and oversees a lot of the learning that takes place. And when we talk about alignment, it's pre-K-12. So we want to ensure that the feedback teachers are getting and the, really the alignment practices that we have for high expectations for all students happens when students join us. It continues when they move into elementary, continues when they go into middle school. It should not be defined by the different middle schools they attend or the different elementaries, because at the end of the day, as Dr. Anderson said, we have one high school. They all feed to one location. And if we don't have alignment throughout our system, we can have variability. So we will be attending the Principal Supervisory Academy this year. We want to improve principal performance, which will in turn improve teacher performance, which will directly impact student learning. We also have three teachers, or three, sorry, three principals, leading up our Instructional Leadership Academy in year one. This is newer from the last time we spoke about the Center for Educational Leadership. And we were fortunate enough to have the opportunity. We had a district that could not send a couple of their principals, and they, the center reached out to us, asking if we would like to be able to send a few of our principals. And we are excited to be able to send Scott Gangler from the high school, Ryan Carlson from one of our middle schools, and Mary Macacy from the elementary schools. And they're going to be serving and acting as our lead learners to be able to help facilitate future learning as our principals go through the program. What drives principal contributions? It's engaging in instructionally-focused interactions with teachers, building a productive school climate, facilitating productive collaboration and professional learning communities, and managing personnel and resources strategically. It's really being able to know, that last one, know where do you spend your money and how do you spend your money when you're building your staffing model? How are we providing really high-quality intervention supports? PLCs, Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three academic supports for all students to ensure that we have high-quality alignment. Again, goes back to, you'll hear me say alignment a lot, but it does really come back to that, taking place across the system. So you heard Dana talk about PLCs being a key player in this. They really overlap. So there's a lot of work that takes place on the principal side, but it also takes place within the teacher professional learning communities. As they're sitting and focusing on what are their strategic outcomes, what are their aligned goals, and how are they being able to ensure that each and every student is growing? So it's not just meeting a specific standard. Some of our students are already coming to us high-performing. What are we doing to ensure that they continue to grow and have access to the most rigorous content? And then I'll be handing it back over to Dr. Anderson. Thank you.
Thanks, Nate, for the great overview of that particular program. And at this time, I'd like to invite Stacy Voss, our Executive Director of Human Resources, forward to share a little bit about our HR department.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, members of the board and Madam Chair. It's always fun to come and present about the, how the first day of school went and what we're planning on doing for the school year. The first day of school will always be my favorite day of the year. I love the excitement. I love the happiness of the teachers, all of our new hired employees. all of our new hired employees, and seeing the students come back to school. So excited to see everyone again. So it was a great start. And I just want to start by just reminding you, and as I was in line, I was thinking, basically, HR is everything employee-related. And we want to do everything we can to support all of our employees so that they can do the work that they need to do for our students. We need to have our employees feel that they are well-taken care of by HR and by the district. And we do that, obviously, through the recruitment and hiring and retention piece. I think that's probably the first thing you think of with HR is that component. But that's one of many things that we do. And we really work hard to not only entice people to come to Wayzata Public Schools, but we work really hard to make sure that we have good hiring practices in place so that we have a wide variety of teachers and employees to work with our students. And then it's really important to keep our employees engaged. We want their experience in Wayzata Public Schools to be the best work environment that they can find, and we want them to be here. We want to take care of them while they're here in order to lead teachers, in order to keep our buildings clean, in order to support our students and teach our students and make them their wonderfully nutritious meals. They need to know that their benefits are taken care of. They need to know that they have good insurance. They need to know that they have life insurance and health insurance. And we also want to take care of their wellbeing. We know that that's extremely important. And we know that the pandemic has had an impact on not only our children, but also the adults that work within Wayzata Public Schools. We now have two wellbeing advisors on staff, and we're very proud of that fact. We're one of the few districts that actually have an employee assistant program that is a real-life person in our buildings over at Central Middle School. And she can provide services both, you know, by phone, in person. She's still conducting Zoom meetings because that has become a matter of convenience, and people enjoy having those conversations in that manner sometimes. So we're really trying to do everything that we can to make sure that all of our employees can focus on their work and don't necessarily have to worry about the stressors that they may encounter in their lives. Another fun part of Human Resources is the negotiation and the maintaining of all of our district employee contracts. It is really important to have clear terms and conditions for our employees to operate under. We should be fair and consistent in all of our interactions with our employees and those contracts, which many of you have helped to negotiate and have approved just recently, are really important to the success of the overall district. Another component is all of the leaves. As you know, FMLA, ADA accommodations, and Title IX are all federally mandated and have a lot of rules and regulations that come along with that. And we want to do our best for all of our employees to make sure that they not only take advantage of those opportunities, but that they understand how they work for when they need them. And while we want them to have kind of a basic understanding that there's something there to support them, we want them to count on their HR department to know that we'll help them through all of the details and make sometimes scary processes seem very doable and very attainable. And then the other piece that we always work on are just employee issues. So employment law, policy, procedures, statutes, all of those pieces HR has to have an understanding of so that we can collaborate, obviously, with every one of our departments in the district and all of our principals and directors to make sure that we are providing good advice to keep everyone focused on the work that we need to do and to avoid, I like to use the term, going in the ditch or getting distracted from the work that we need to do. I do need to say that, obviously, I can't do all of that by myself, and I have the most incredible team that time and time steps up again to do things that maybe aren't in their job description. And I just need to thank them for all the additional duties that they took on last year in COVID. One of our department's big challenges or big events was the vaccination clinic. And so it took a lot of our staff manpower to put that in place to provide that service to our community because we always want to be not only supporting our school community, but our families as well. So with that said, I always think it's interesting to see what the makeup of a school district looks like and the employees that we work with and how that plays out. So as you can see up on the PowerPoint, we have 1,703 very talented and very dedicated staff. And we still need more. So DeeDee thanked me out by kind of plugging that we need more people, but I'm going to do the same thing. If you are interested or know of anyone interested in being a paraprofessional, actually, you should start with a substitute, a paraprofessional, Wayzata Kids, Wayzata Cafe, custodial, we have positions open in those areas. The last one, administrative professionals, those are our secretaries, just in case you're wondering. And we usually don't have openings in that area. People really enjoy that position within the district, which is kind of fun. So that's the breakdown of our staffing. And as you can see, obviously, teachers make up the majority of the staff that we hire. And then for this year, we welcomed 148 new staff members. Over the summer, we hired 46 teachers, 45 Wayzata kids. I'm not going to read through all of that, but you can see that we've been busy. And like I said, we're still trying to hire. So those numbers will continue to increase. Another piece that's always interesting for people to know is kind of to understand the makeup of our teachers and where they're at within their careers. It's really important for HR to monitor those numbers and to keep those numbers a little bit balanced because you don't want to have 46% of your work staff, you know, retire at one time. So you want to kind of monitor that to make sure that we are staying balanced in those areas. And then just the degrees that our teachers have. I'm very proud of the teachers that we have in the district, how hard they work. They not only work hard at preparing lesson plans and providing outstanding services to students, but if they would like to see any pay increases, there is that motivation to pursue their education and to, you know, and it's not just for the pay piece, but it also means that our teachers are, have that background in education to better serve our students as well. So it's nice to see all of those teachers with their master's degree. And that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, team, for your presentations tonight. I might just have you hold right there in case the board has any questions for us in a little bit. I did want to just hit on a couple of other departmental areas quickly. First, communications and community engagement. That's led up by our very own Amy Parnell, who's with us here this evening. But I just wanted to quickly hit on a couple of things that Amy helps us do. So you'll see a couple of the bullet points there from our vision statement, really working on building that community trust and confidence, maintaining the highest levels of satisfaction by our students, staff, parents, and community. And we do our best to try to communicate about those key things that we think are essential and important for our community to know. And we do that, again, through direct mailings and also emailings or direct mailings along with our website presence. I think that'll come back. There it is. So we, and as I said before, we do this in a variety of strategies. So there's a few things that probably look familiar to you as board members and those in attendance tonight. You've received the postcard, which is in the center at home, and then a number of online opportunities to learn more about the school district as well. I also wanted to just share a little bit on behalf of Jenny Ebert in regard to our community ed program. We're a large community of about 70,000 residents within the footprint of the Wayzata School District. We have about 12,000 students, and that means we probably have about 24,000 parents of current students in our district and many empty nesters whose children have graduated from Wayzata Public Schools. My wife and I are an example of that. As you all know, we have two alums, one from 2013 and one from 2017. So our community is really made up of a wide array of individuals and either current parents, former parents, or just those who find this to be a great community to live in. So community ed, I share that because community ed really is intended to help serve the pre-K and our adult learners within the community. And there's a variety of things that our community ed programming does. So I'll just kind of work around from the 12 o'clock position here. Classes, including after-school, weekdays, evenings, Saturdays for adults and kids. All of our childcare programs for before and after-school. And again, you've heard many of my colleagues indicate that we're still in the hunt for more staff, and this is an area that we could use some more help. We could always use more in a variety of positions. But that after-school care is really important, and the demand and the need is really high for that. We'd like to meet it all, but it's really challenging. We also engage volunteers in a variety of ways. Our early learning school, as you all know, are many housed at our new early learning school adjacent to Oakwood or built onto Oakwood recently. We also do some early learning programming within our elementary schools as well. We have many partnerships, strategic partnerships within the community and surrounding area. And we also rent our facilities. That was one area that was a, you know, really a tough hit financially last year because we were not renting out our facilities. And we're getting back into the swing of that again this year. But that's a good source of revenue for community ed and a great service provider to the community. So those viewing this slide probably have seen these catalogs come to your homes. I think these are mailed out to either all parents or all residents within the community. And of course, we have seen them as staff members or board members as well. So that's how we communicate about all the great community ed programming that Jenny and her team put together. I also just wanted to mention our Special Services Department. Jody Remzing is our Director of Special Services, and she really oversees all of these functions, special ed and early childhood special ed. 504 plans, our English learning programs. And you heard earlier tonight, we recognize one of our wonderful EL teachers here in the district. Transition programming is that programming for 18- to 21-year-olds, for students who continue their educational programming under the Special Services Department. Title I, and of course, Health Services, which has had a really prominent position in the district in the last 18 months and elevated to a whole new arena. I also wanted to mention Wade Phillips, our Director of Technology Services. And as I indicated in my earlier comments, the incredible work that they've done in the last 18 months, creating new ways of distributing equipment, maintaining equipment, getting needed equipment, managing the software, getting new software. The list could go on and on, as well as providing support for staff and students and maintaining our equipment and just updating all the different systems that they work with. So shout out for all of those departmental leaders. And with that, I would just like to thank the board. And I also want to thank all of you that are here in attendance tonight. And as I said before, our community is comprised of 70,000 residents and 24,000 parents and 12,000 students. And as you might guess, there's a wide array of perspectives and viewpoints. And the superintendent's job is to take all 70,000 of those inputs and seek a way forward and create something in tandem with our school board and with our wonderful leadership team. So I say that kind of in jest, if you will, recognizing that it is a challenge. We work really hard to do our best and to try to put together a way forward, whether it's academic programming or operational systems to really help us deliver on that mission and vision within our strategic roadmap. So I do appreciate that you're here. I do appreciate hearing your inputs. And again, speaking as a parent, former parent of students in the district, now two alums, it was just a great experience for them. I do hope your kids are having a great experience with us and that that continues. And I can assure you that we'll keep working hard to do our very best. So with that, thanks for being here. I do really appreciate it, especially at almost 9 o'clock. I appreciate your time. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you and give you an opportunity to ask any questions of our team and the same for your colleagues. Thanks for the time tonight.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And I would just like to take this opportunity to thank you and all of the administrators who are here this evening, as well as the administrators who aren't here this evening. We know how hard you work all the time and the amount of time and effort and passion you've put into the last 18 months to make sure that our kids have a quality education is just, it's beyond imagination how hard you've been working. And so on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for all the extra time and effort. We really do appreciate it. And I'm sure that my board colleagues will have some comments and questions as well. Anyone?
Yeah, thanks. I'm just going to echo that, oh, my gosh, it's so exciting to be talking about middle school curriculum models and building and all of the things that we are talking about. And just to underscore it, Andrea's saying, I know right now you're walking in two worlds. And one is that pandemic world and all of the stress of that. And then the second is, thank you very much for your leadership and helping us to look forward and move forward. So I, thanks for what you do. And it's so exciting to start to think forward in all that we can and will be doing in the future.
Thanks, Sarah. Anyone else? Chris?
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Anderson, and to your entire team. As my board colleague said, it's been, it's been an interesting 18 months, and I think you've done an incredibly good job getting us where we are. So thank you very much. I do have two, they're questions, but they're really requests for further information, probably at an upcoming work session, so I'll just throw them out. Staffing seemed to be kind of a theme tonight. And so, you know, maybe to Ms. Voss or Ms. Carring, I know Ms. Ebert is also having challenges with Wayzata Kids. It would be great at some, you know, near-future work session to kind of understand a little bit more about what we're doing as a district to kind of shrink that gap, if you will. So, you know, maybe Madam Chair can work with you, Dr. Anderson, on getting that on the agenda. And then the other, the other item for Dr. Flansburgh, the Center for Educational Leadership is some really, really interesting material. And also for an upcoming work session, I would love to hear more about that. In particular, maybe what the timing looks like in terms of a rollout. I don't think this is a 30-day rollout. I think this is probably more like a multi-year rollout, but it would be great to get some, a little, a little bit more detail at a future board work session. So, thanks.
All right, I got that down. Chris, okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions? All right, great. Thank you so much for all the information. All right. Next on our agenda, I'll let DeeDee get back to her seat and we'll move on to Finance and Business Services. First on the list with DeeDee Carring, we have financial reports for July 2021.
I always seem to have trouble with my mic. Well, now I've got two of them going. Okay, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson. Tonight, just to give you a little update on our monthly financial reports, this is for the month of July 31st, 2021. As you know, the school district's fiscal year is, runs from July through June 30th. So this is the first month of reporting, and the percent that you see of expenses to budget is pretty typical of what we would normally see. One of the things that I did want to note, that if you saw on the financial reports in both the revenue and the expense side, you saw that there was a notation regarding our debt service. So we did not include the refunding of the bond within that because it would skew the percentages so much. But just wanting you to know that the refunding of that bond, that was revenue that came in, but it has to be held in an escrow account to pay the principal and interest payments in 2023 when they're callable. So just that was noted on there. That will probably continue to be noted on our reports so that you'll know that in the future. Otherwise, the financial reports, which include the analysis of financial reporting, statement of revenue, statements of expenditures, and the investment summary are pretty typical of what we see. And without that one notification that I mentioned, all seem reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, we can move on to the next item, which is Appointment of Election Judges.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson. Agenda item 7C2 is a resolution to appoint election judges for the school district election on November 2nd, 2021. A list of the names and the rate of pay is included in the resolution. And the board is asked to adopt and approve the resolution.
Okay, thank you. The recommended action before us is to adopt, as presented, the resolution relating to the appointment of election judges for the general election on November 2nd, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
I still move. I so move and waive reading of the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have the appointment of absentee ballot board.
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the board and Superintendent Anderson. Again, 7(c)(3) is a resolution appointing the absentee ballots. The school board is required to officially appoint qualified individual to serve as absentee ballot board election judges for the school district elections. Attached is the resolution appointing absentee ballot board election judges for November 2 general election. You'll note that the Hennepin County elections will be managed all mid-mail-in absentee ballots, and Hennepin County will appoint an absentee ballot board for all Hennepin County elections occurring on November 2. The board is asked to approve the resolution.
Okay, thank you. The recommended action before us is to adopt, as presented, the resolution appointing absentee ballot board election judges for the general election on November 2, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
I so move and ask that we waive the reading of the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, this is also a roll call vote. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have human resource services. I'll turn it over to Stacy Voss for Wayzata Education Association contract for fiscal year 2021 through 2023.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson. This is actually a review of the board-approved WEA contract. As a reminder, on September 9, we held a special meeting in which the board conducted the roll call and approved the WEA contract in an effort to be transparent and to share the details of the contract. We are also, I'm summarizing it for everyone this evening. So the school board's bargaining team and the Wayzata Education Association representatives reached a tentative contract agreement on July 21, 2021. Subsequently, the WEA teachers voted on Wednesday, September 8, to redify the contract. On September 9, 2021, during a special meeting, the WEA contract was approved by the board. As a reminder, a special meeting was necessary in order to allow for the proper processing time necessary to meet payroll's deadline of September 15. In summary, the district and the WEA negotiations team engaged in interest-based bargaining and worked on over 30 issues from May through July. A few of the issues we reached agreement on included 403B contributions, childcare leave, special education stretch calendars, and due process days. We created guidelines for teacher involvement should the district implement an online learning school, and we worked through overall salary and extracurricular salary increases, which were negotiated at 2.5% in year one and 2.9% in year two. The negotiation team members were Peter McGowan, Erin Bernt, Andy Cohen, Tina Kristofferson, and Clarice Jornby for the teachers, and then Andrea Keen, Cheryl Polzin, DeeDee Carrion, Mert Woodard, and myself for the district. I would like to express my appreciation for the collaborative efforts put forth by the negotiation team members throughout this process. The team's collective ability to resolve issues in a positive and respectful manner benefits our entire school community. Since this has already been voted on, no further action is required, but thank you again for your willingness to hold a special meeting and for your time this evening.
Thank you so much for that summary, Stacy, and thank you also so much for your leadership during that entire process. As mentioned, Cheryl Polzin and I were the board representatives on the negotiations team this summer, and I'd also like to sincerely thank everyone who sat around the table, including the head teacher negotiator, Clarice Jornby, teachers Tina Kristofferson, Andy Cohen, Peter McCown, and Erin Bernt, as well as district negotiators Stacy Voss, Mert Woodard, DeeDee Carrion, and Cheryl Polzin. The board is grateful for our excellent teachers, and it was our honor and our pleasure to approve the teacher contract for the 2021-2023 school years. Do any other board members have comments or questions? Well, Cheryl?
I'll just echo what everybody said and add my thanks to everybody serving. It was a long process, it always is, but that's what interest-based bargaining is all about, is learning about the concerns of each group and reaching consensus that serves everyone well. And then that translates into serving our students well. So I really appreciate the process. I appreciate everybody's hard, hard work and the time that was spent to reach a really solid contract. I really appreciate it. And as many people know, I serve on the board of the Minnesota School Boards Association, and I have a chance to interact with a lot of board members from across the whole state. And we have something very special here. And by comparison, I think it really serves our community and our students well when we're all pulling in the same direction. So thanks again, everyone.
So well said. Thanks, Cheryl. Sarah?
Okay, so I have to say something. And that something is thank you to Cheryl and thank you to Andrea. When you sign up to do the teacher negotiations, it's kind of a full-time job for about four months, literally, and it's really a lot of work. And so as, as board members, that's giving a lot of your time and a lot of your mental energy because you're working really hard around the table. So thanks to the two of you for so expertly representing the board and also for donating your time and your care and attention to this process that is so important. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, thanks, everyone. Next on our agenda, we have board reports. And first up, we have the superintendent evaluation committee update. So I will turn it over to the chair of that committee, Bonita Lucky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. September 13, 2021, Dr. Anderson, 2021 Annual Performance Review Summary. On September 2, 2020, the members of the Wayzata Board met with Dr. Anderson to review his goals for 2021 school year. In 2020, Wayzata School District faced a once-in-a-generation pandemic, which required decisiveness, equanimity, and leadership to navigate. In addition, there was racial and political unrest across the country and close to home. The circumstances were the backdrop for his goals of, one, improving racial equity across Wayzata schools; two, reducing the opportunity achievement gap; three, enhancing the focus of health and well-being of Wayzata students; and four, creating a management structure commensurate with the needs of the growing district. Through these extraordinary times, Dr. Anderson created an extensive list of goals and action steps that would address the current and emerging needs of our district. Over the course of the year, Dr. Anderson provided quarterly updates regarding his work, and the board would like to commend him for maintaining this focus despite the continued disruptions brought on by the pandemic. At the July 26, 2021 work session, Dr. Anderson provided a summary of his progress, and board members subsequently provided feedback regarding his strengths and areas of growth. At the August 25, 2021 closed board meeting, the school board met with Dr. Anderson to discuss the results of his performance review. Tonight, we would like to share the summary of our findings. Some of Dr. Anderson's demonstrated successes in relation to the goal areas include: improve racial equity across Wayzata schools. Examples of progress include launching the Equity Commitment aligned to the strategic directions and supporting human resources in documenting and standardizing the process for recruiting staff and teachers of color. Reduce the opportunity achievement gap. Examples of progress include supporting community education and parent programming dedicated to addressing the opportunity and achievement gap. Enhance the focus of health and well-being of Wayzata students. Examples of progress include using the best data available to meet the mental health and well-being need of our students during the pandemic. Successfully distributing food to our students and families during the pandemic and hiring additional student support staff and nurses in the district. Create a management structure commensurate with the needs of the growing district. Examples of progress include creating the role of and successfully hiring a new associate superintendent and hiring a highly experienced executive director of teaching and learning and executive director of business and finance. In addition to the above successes seen in the identified four goals, Dr. Anderson also demonstrated progress in his commitment to the district's three vision areas. Exceptional student learning, experience, and relationships during the pandemic. Examples of progress include focusing on and providing leadership for the development of comprehensive and educational sound learning plans that provide a meaningful educational experience for students in distance, hybrid, and in-person learning that underscored personalization and challenged the teams to meet diverse learning needs of our students. Community trust, confidence, and partnership. Examples of progress include responding thoughtfully to thousands of emails from parents, teachers, and community members, displaying empathy, professionalism, and a commitment of building relationships and earning community trust. Maintaining and improving our AAA bond rating. Refinancing bonds to save taxpayers millions over 10 years and protecting the district's financial viability through continued commitment to fiscal prudence and financial discipline even during a global pandemic. Operational excellence. Examples of progress include remaining committed to providing comprehensive quarterly updates on progress towards achieving your established goal despite the incredible demands of leading the district through a global pandemic and the need for multiple learning model changes. Opportunities for improvement. The board recognizes that even in the context of remarkable success, there is always room for growth and improvement. Below are some suggestions for Dr. Anderson's improvement in the identified goal areas. Improve racial equity across Wayzata schools. Further define the Equity Commitment. Build awareness. Make tactical plans. Implement a timeline and make steady progress. Reducing the opportunity achievement gap. Address the achievement gap by adopting, evaluating, and strengthening our assessment practices. Enhance the focus on health and well-being of Wayzata students. Continue to explore and implement opportunities to bring parents and students to the table as groups, task force, and ad hoc committees to speak perspectives and input. Capture student voice and optimize a commitment to collaboration and transparency. Create a management structure commensurate with the needs of the growing district. Continue to focus on hiring diverse candidates and encourage HR to seek out and report on efforts in recruiting and creating diverse candidate pools. Looking ahead, the board looks forward to meeting with Dr. Anderson in the upcoming weeks to consider and define goals for 2021-2022 school year. At this time, the board suggests that Dr. Anderson consider prioritizing measurable improvement in the achievement gap, along with a continued focus on health and well-being and ongoing refinement of the organizational structure. As we began in the past year, the board will look forward to quarterly progress updates on this established goal. In conclusion, the board would like to commend Dr. Anderson on his progress and specifically for his commitment to the ambitious list of goals. As the review indicated, even in the most challenging of times, Dr. Anderson displayed exceptional leadership and unravering dedication to excellence for each and every student. The board is exceedingly grateful for Dr. Anderson's leadership and his tireless commitment to our students. Thank you, Dr. Anderson, for your excellent service to our district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonita. And I just want to congratulate you again, Dr. Anderson. I don't know how we could be more grateful for your dedication to the school district. And I think Bonita kind of put it in perspective when she said the thousands of emails that we know you respond to, and you're always sincere. And I think that that's part of why our community trusts you. So thank you. And I'll share with anybody who's still watching and those who are still here that we have been working on our superintendent evaluation throughout the year and had a two-hour meeting to discuss all these details. So I don't think we need to probably go over that again tonight, other than just to give you one more big thank you. And also to thank the superintendent evaluation committee, led by Bonita, and then also Sarah Johansson and Cian Falconer, who've really successfully created a format so that it's built into everything we do throughout the year, and we're checking back quarterly. I think it's really improved over the years. So thank you for that work. And thank you again, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening, we have another board report on the school board vacancy update. And I'll share that Cian Falconer resigned from the school board effective September 10, 2021. And as a reminder, at our special meeting on August 31, the school board discussed the process we'll be using to fill this vacant seat. The board was in agreement that we will follow district precedent and explore our ability to appoint a past school board member who has the knowledge and experience to hit the ground running and join us in our work as soon as possible. The school board is also open to appointing a past school board candidate or a community member who has experience volunteering in the district. This process is underway, and we will continue to update the public as we look forward to appointing a new board member at a future school board meeting. One other board report I have is, I'd like to share some information about the upcoming Wayzata School Board Candidate Forum. This event will give the community the opportunity to hear directly from the candidates on Wednesday, September 29, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. at Plymouth City Hall. Please make note of this new location at Plymouth City Hall. The event is sponsored and hosted by the League of Women Voters and will be live, livestreamed, and recorded for future public viewing online. Questions will be taken from the audience or may be submitted up to one day in advance to the League of Women Voters website. The Wayzata School Board Election will be held on Tuesday, November 2, and absentee voting begins this Friday, September 17. Are there any other board reports or announcements? All right, hearing none. This concludes the Wayzata Public Schools regular meeting for September 13, 2021. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries. We are adjourned.